Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our board meeting of May 16th. Please stand and our superintendent will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on which, under God, and indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It's so nice to see everybody here that we can recognize our students tonight. Next is our approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of May 2nd. I need a motion, please.
Swit will make the motion.
I feel support.
On favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now we have some nice things happening. Mr. Rice, you want to turn that over to us?
Sure. Good evening, everybody. At this time, the board likes to recognize some groups that have really represented Roseville Schools well, and tonight we're here to honor some students from the high school for a couple of different things. Before we bring Mr. Benton up to help us with this, I do want to acknowledge the Scholarship Foundation and the students that earned a scholarship. While they're not coming up tonight, they were given their scholarships or awarded them last week. If you look in the agenda on the back, there's a list of 44 students that put in essays and received $1,000 scholarships. A lot of hard work goes in from the Scholarship Foundation folks, and these kids are really deserving, and they deserve a round of applause. So let's hear it for the whole group. The other two groups that we want to honor tonight, that the board wants to recognize, first is going to be the top 10 students in the senior class, and then after that, we're going to recognize the high school leaders in different areas that they participate in during the school year. So at this time, Mr. Benton, if you could come up and give me a hand, and we'll start with the top 10. Sure, let's hear for Mr. Benton. He deserves it.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Jason Benton, the principal here at Roseville High School. And I think the easiest, the best way to do this might be just to have our entire top 10 come up on stage. And then what we'll do is I'll announce your names. I'll go through the entire top 10, announce names, and we will hand the certificates and have our top 10 on stage all at once. There'll be some good practice for graduation. That's about a week from now when we will also have our top 10 on the stage so they can get a little practice under the lights. So if our top 10 could come up and join us, and then I will announce names. It's a great pleasure to announce these students that make up the top 10 of the Roseville High School Class of 2022. As I say your name, I just ask that you sort of step forward to be acknowledged. We will give you your certificate of recognition. And also, at the end, when everybody has their certificates, we'll just pass the microphone down the line so you can again introduce yourself and who you came here with tonight. So our first member of our top 10 is Serenity DeBose Franklin. Next is Brendan Brazinski. Step forward, Brendan. Step forward. There you go. And Ms. Janay has a certificate for you. Serenity is right behind you. See, that's why you got to step forward. Help out Ms. Janay too, because she doesn't know you guys. Next, we have Lena Yang. Yeah, I didn't think I saw Lena come in tonight. And next, we have our Tarian Cooper. Isabella Skaggs is the next member of our top 10. We also have Mariah Williams as a member of our top 10. Danae Youngblood is the next member of our top 10. I don't think Danae is here. I didn't see her come in. Ashley Hudek is another member of the Class of 2022 Top 10. I'd like to introduce to you our salutatorian for the Class of 2022, Maria Ranki. And finally, our valedictorian for the Class of 2022, Jacqueline Brun. And I'll pass the microphone down, and if you just want to introduce who is here with you tonight.
I'm Isabella. I'm here with my mom and brother.
Hi, I'm here with my mom and my dad and my two teammates.
I'm Maria. I'm here with my parents, my aunt, my brother, and my sister.
I'm Brendan. I'm here with my mom and dad.
I'm Mariah. I'm here with my mom, my dad, and my boyfriend.
I'm Tarian Cooper. I'm here with my mother, father, and sister.
Hi, I'm Serenity. I'm here with my parents, my sister, my boyfriend, and his friend.
Let's give one more big round of applause. It won't be the final round of applause because they have graduation in a week to our top 10 for the Class of 2022. Great job, everybody. While they're taking a seat, and before we get to honor some of our student leaders, I know Mr. Rice mentioned our Roseville Scholarship recipients. I just want to take a moment to say something about the Roseville Community School Scholarship Foundation. For those of you who have juniors or underclassmen who may be in the audience, the Roseville Community School Scholarship Foundation is an organization that works to give $1,000 scholarships to our seniors. There's an application process that takes place every winter. This year, we had, I believe, was it 45, 44 seniors, all of whom who applied, and all of whom received a $1,000 scholarship. So if you have a junior, if you have a sophomore, if you have a freshman, that is the thing when they become a senior, to encourage them to definitely apply for. The Scholarship Foundation likes to give away as many scholarships to seniors as they possibly can. If I could have a few people join me onstage, I'm going to ask for our assistant principal, one of our assistant principals, Mr. Chris LaFevre, to join us, one of our teachers, Mr. Brian King, to join us, as well as another of our staff members, Mr. Eric Madison, to join us. If you look in the packet for tonight, you can see there's a wide variety of student leaders that are being honored. And that speaks volumes about the offerings that we have here at Roseville High School. And what I think is really important about this group of leaders that we're honoring tonight, that in the midst of COVID-19 and all of the challenges COVID-19 has posed to schools, has posed to education over the two years now, really, these are students who stepped up, who have responded to those challenges, and have been leaders in their groups to make, whether it's robotic competitions, plays, service hours, just leadership in the building, all happened throughout the year, and struggle through figuring out how do we do a pep rally in the midst of a pandemic? How do we put on a play in the midst of some social distancing? And how do we do some of these rehearsals and all of these things? So it's a great honor to have them here tonight. And I'll start with the teachers that we have here to give some introductions. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Madison, who is one of our Student Assembly sponsors, to start with Student Assembly, and he will also be introducing our journalism leaders as well.
Hi, thank you, guys, for coming. It really means a lot that you're out here supporting your children here at this event, and we appreciate seeing all of you. Like Mr. Benton mentioned, I'm a Student Assembly advisor, and I'm here to recognize our class officers and our Student Assembly officers. So if we could have the following just come up, just like the top 10 did, could we have Austin Barnett, Shayla Callaway, Kaitlin Miller, Zach Osorio, Lily Parker, Maria Ranki, and Olivia Rosel? Come on up. Okay, like Mr. Benton was saying as they get up here, we've been really impressed with our Student Assembly, all of our members, especially the ones that have taken leadership roles. The, obviously, in high school, we want them to learn academic skills, but on top of that, we also want them to learn life skills. And through these last few years with the pandemic, these students are the ones that really thrive to put on a lot of the fun events that we have here at the school. And it was really difficult for us to not be able to do a lot of that. And over the last year, we've been able to come, bring back a lot of those events. But that's required them to practice some of those life skills, such as being able to adapt and overcome obstacles, perseverance, all that good stuff. And we are really proud of them. So as I mention your name, if you, oh, she did give awards out already. So they know exactly who you are. If you could just step forward really quick, and then at the end, we'll give them a big round of applause. So our junior class vice president, Austin Barnett. Our junior class president is Lily Parker, however, she is not here tonight. Our senior class vice president is Marie Ranki. Our senior class president is Shayla Callaway. Our Student Assembly secretary is Kaitlin Miller. Our Student Assembly vice president is Zach Osorio. And our Student Assembly president is Olivia Rosel. Thank you so much for everything you guys do. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm Olivia, and I'm here with my parents, my sister, and my niece.
I already said it. I'm with my parents, my brother, my sister, and my aunt.
I'm Zach. I'm here with my stepdad, my sister, my mom, my grandma, and my grandpa.
I'm Kaitlin, and I'm just here with my parents.
I'm Austin, and I'm here with my parents.
I'm Shayla, and I'm here with my parents, my sister, my brother, my niece and nephew.
And I'll turn it back over to Mr. Madison, who, as a member of our English department, is also recognizing our journalism leaders tonight.
Yes, Ms. Druin, who is the Journalism Two teacher and advisor for Yearbook, and P Prowl, our online newspaper, could not make it today. So I will call up the following students, and then I will say a few things on behalf of Ms. Druin. So if we could have Megan come on up, Paige, Mackenzie, Grace, Genesis, Isabella, Matt, and Danae. I apologize. I'm reading this off of a phone. This is the text message that Ms. Druin sent me that she wanted me to say. So, "Sorry, I could not be there tonight to recognize these Journalism Two editors for their efforts in making our yearbook and website, P Prowl, possible. With their leadership, we have been able to meet deadlines and produce a yearbook that we are very proud of. We can't wait for delivery in a few weeks so that we can see it published and distribute to students and staff. From taking photos to editing spreads and stories, the editorial staff is vital to our success, and I am grateful for their dedication." So if we could, so you can be recognized individually, if you could just step forward as I mentioned your name, Megan Gannon, editor in chief. Paige Gwen, managing editor. Mackenzie Hubbard, copy editor. Grace Patterson, sports editor. Genesis Reed, sports editor. Isabella Skaggs, yearbook editor. Matt Skachillis, copy editor. And Danae Youngblood, copy editor. Now, if you could tell us who you're here with.
Hello again. My name is Isabelle, and I'm with my mom and my brother.
I'm Matt. I brought my dad, but mom, if you're seeing this, hi.
I'm Megan. I'm here with my mom, my dad, and my great aunt.
I'm Genesis, and I'm here with my parents, my grandma, my aunt, and my two softball teammates.
I'm Mackenzie. I'm here with my mom, my dad, and my two brothers.
I'm Grace, and I'm here with my mom.
I'm Paige, and I'm here with my mom and my two teammates.
Next, I'd like to introduce Mr. Brian King, who is our longtime Quiz Bowl sponsor and has done a great job of getting our kids competition-ready for Quiz Bowl, getting them traveling and engaging in competition throughout the school year. So, Mr. King, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, yeah, just if you don't know what Quiz Bowl is all about, think Jeopardy with teams. And so what we do is we go against other schools in the county, compete against them, and we do pretty well. I'm going to introduce Jordan. Jordan Hibbert. Yeah, come on, make it up here. Yeah, Jordan, he was by far the leading scorer on the team, and also the unquestioned captain of the team. But I think even more importantly, taking something like Quiz Bowl and making it fun and exciting and lots of laughing, that's where he really excels. And fortunately, I kept to get him next year, too. Jordan, who are you with?
I'm just with my parents.
I'm just with my parents.
Yeah, good parents, though.
Next, I'll turn it over to one of our assistant principals, Mr. Chris LaFevre, who will handle the next set of recognitions.
Thank you, Mr. Benton. The next group I'm going to invite up, as I say their names, is for the band. Mr. Cheshire's not here today, so I'm going to speak a little bit about him and introduce him. So if Devon's here, Christian, Kyola, Kalen, Julia, Olivia, Anthony, Maria, and Devia, if you're here today, if you make your, Devia, sorry. Make your way up here, then I'll introduce you all at the same time. Mr. Cheshire's not here today, but our band group is one of our amazing, dedicated groups that we have here at Roseville High School. A lot of times, we think about athletics and how much time and energy they put in, but our band are just as dedicated. They spend hours here in the summertime, springtime, and especially in the fall. And they had some chances to go out and do some competitions and brought back some amazing things for us. I know Mr. Cheshire's been very busy the last couple of weeks. He planned a bunch of events at the end of the year, so I know he's probably exhausted and trying to keep up with it all. So I appreciate you guys all for coming and the time and effort that you put into it. The first person I'm going to introduce is our low brass section leader, Devon Dupree. You could step out. Not. Devon? Devon's not here. Christian Clark, clarinet section leader. Kyloa Du Lonsan. I practiced it a lot of times before. She's our senior drum major. Kaitlin Miller, our alto section leader. Julia Puckett, color guard captain. Olivia Rosel, our tenor section leader. Anthony Wetworth, our drum section leader. Not here. Maria Williams, our flute section leader. Mariah, our flute section leader. Stay there, Mariah. Stay out there. Go back out. Section leader. Thank you. Danae Youngblood? Not here. So again, congratulations to our band group. I know Mr. Cheshire talks about this great group and how much he's going to miss them and their leadership, because it really is our older group and our section leaders really taking them under their wings and really doing some great things, because without them, I know Mr. Cheshire would smash his head on the hot wall a lot. So thank you very much. Let's give him one last round of applause.
I'm Olivia, and I'm here with my parents, my sister, and my niece.
I'm Julia, and I'm here with my parents.
I'm Kaitlin, and I'm here with my parents.
I'm Kay Aloha, and I'm here with my mom, my dad, two of my brothers, two of my sisters, and my boyfriend.
I'm Mariah, and I'm here with my parents and my boyfriend.
I'm Christian. I'm here with my mom, my dad, and my sister.
The next group we're going to invite up is our Drama Society. So Amelia, Julian, Danzel, Savannah, Devon, and Paige are here. You can make your way up here. So right along with our amazing band group, we also have a choir that practices just as many hours after school, during school. They pretty much live here most time. Drama. I'm, drama. Well, the problem is that the same people are in the same group, so when I see her face, I think singing, because she just did an amazing job not too long ago in one of our performances. So just to show you how much and amazing our kids are, they're pretty much involved in everything. And this group right here are really involved a lot in our, also our choir. So thank you. So I gave you a shout out. You didn't even know you were going to get it, so congratulations. Drama, Amelia is our president. Amelia, you want to step up? Next, we have Julian Ford. He is our vice president. Danzel Harville is our artistic coordinator. Savannah Kraft is our treasurer. Devon Newsome, public relations coordinator. And Paige Tamala, who's not here, is our secretary. So congratulations again. I'm going to hand it to you, Drama Society, to introduce who you're with.
Hi, my name's Amelia, and I'm here with my mom.
Hi, my name's Savannah, and I'm here with my mom.
Hello, everybody. My name is Julian. I'm here with my mother, Megan, my grandmother, Annette, and my twin brothers.
Hi, my name is Devon. I'm here with my queen and my mommy, Yolanda.
Thank you very much. The next group we have? Thank you. Sure. I want to see you guys walk all the way back to make you come back up. National Honor Society, Jacqueline. No. National Honor Society tricked you again. That's what you get for bringing me last time. Jacqueline, Lauren, Danae, and Maria for National Honor Society. If any of you are here tonight, you make your way up here. All right, the first person I'm going to introduce is Jacqueline Brun, who's the co-president. Next is Laura Billings, who's a secretary. Danae Fortsum, which is the co-president. And not here today is Marie Ranki, who is our vice president. She's right there. I knew I had one of the two. Congratulations to National Honor Society again. Mr. Check and Ms. Jordan were not able to be with us today. Congratulations. I know you guys were in part of a really important ceremony a couple of weeks ago where you got to induct the next group. So thank you for your leadership and all you've done, and congratulations. Don't move yet, Danae.
Hi, my parents are still there.
One more time. My parents, my brother, my sister, and my aunt are here.
I'm here with my mom.
And I will introduce our last three organizations. The first one that I would like to introduce is our REST Club, and REST stands for Robotics, Engineering, Science, and Technology. So if I could have Tyler, Luis Sumner, and Paige join me on the stage. And as these guys are coming up here, they were today preparing for a competition. They have competition tomorrow. Were able to make it here tonight. And if you've never seen our Mechatronics Lab, where our REST Club works out of, it's an amazing place that is full of 3D printers, circuit boards, monitors, wiring, and all just kinds of, for lack of a better way to put it, stuff that these guys are able to tinker with and build and create robots that they take into various competitions over the course of the year. So we, first, I'd like to introduce Tyler, who leads our Mini IVD program, which I believe is Individual Vehicular Drone. Am I correct on that one, Tyler? Individualized Vehicular Drone? Is that what IVD is? Yeah, that means an RC. Luis Gomez, who is, leads our V2X programming part of our REST Club. Sumner Hall, who is part of our FIRST Robotics, which are larger robots, and Autonomous IVD. And Paige Armbrister, who could not be here tonight, but she leads our underwater IVD, our underwater robotics team. So a lot of different, very cool, very creative things that our REST Club is involved in. So I'll pass it to you guys so you can introduce who you're here with.
Hi, I'm Tyler. I'm here with my mom, my brother, my dad, and my stepmom.
Hi, I'm Sumner Hall. I'm here with my mom, my dad, my sister, my brother, and my grandparents.
Hi, I'm Luis, and I'm here with my mom, my dad, my three brothers, and my sister.
Next, I'll introduce our two choirs, starting with our symphonic choir. Mr. LaFevre introduced our band leaders. And interesting thing, and parents that are in the audience, I'm sure you know this. Music and classes and organizations like choir and band have been incredibly, incredibly difficult over the past two years, when students, especially last year, had to perform as a band across computers, learn band, learn how to sing, do performances across computers, an incredibly difficult thing. And it speaks volumes to what these students, both in our band who we've introduced and our choirs that I'm about to introduce, speaks volumes to their grit and perseverance, because both of those groups, our bands and our choirs, this year have won numerous, numerous awards at the district level, at the state level for their performances. And that's a true testament to the hard work that, again, as parents, you know this if your kids are in choir and band, but the hard work that they put in in the face of challenge, those challenges of COVID-19. So I'll start with our symphonic choir. Ms. Collins could not be here tonight, like Mr. Ms. Collins could not be here tonight, like Mr. Cheshire, lots and lots of events going on at the very end of the year, so I told her I could do this for her. So as I announce our symphonic choir members, if you could just come on up. So if Amelia, Shayla, Frederick, Isabelle, Savannah, Lakaya, Kenneth, Paige, and Donovan could all come up. So for our symphonic choir, we have Amelia Boris, our secretary. Shayla Callaway, our librarian. Frederick Du-Hay-Lansad, our co-vice president. Isabelle Flicker, our concert attire coordinator. I'll let Ms. Danae catch up with me here. It's all right. Savannah Kraft, our co-president. Lakaya Reese, our treasurer. Kenneth Ross, our co-president. Paige Tamala, our co-vice president. And Donovan Vanette, our public relations coordinator. And now, I'll let them introduce, maybe sometimes again, who they're here with.
Hi, my name is Amelia and I'm here with my mom.
Hi, I'm Savannah, I'm here with my mom.
Hi, guys, my name is Fred, I'm here with my parents, my three sisters, my brother, and my sister's boyfriend.
Hi, I'm Isabelle, I'm with my mom, my two brothers, and my brother's girlfriend.
Hi, I'm Shayla, I'm here with my parents, my sister, my brother, my niece, and my nephew.
Hi, my name's Lakaya, I'm here with my mom and my niece.
And as I introduce our last group of student leaders, I'd ask that you all just take a moment and think of some of these names and these titles that we have announced tonight, and the names that are in the board minutes as well, and the titles that are there. Because we truly are recognizing student leaders. These are students who absolutely are participating in activities at school, but are taking on a wide variety of leadership roles, from section leader, treasurer, librarian, vice president, and learning a lot of the other skills that come along with having those positions to help shape them to be leaders. So I'd like to introduce our final group tonight, our treble choir. So if I could have Nakaira, Destiny, Serenity, Lilly, Haley, Kylie, and Kenzie all come up to join us. I'll still introduce everyone, though. With our treble choir, we have Nakaira Christiansen, our librarian. Destiny Cornell, concert attire coordinator. Serenity DeBeauz Franklin, our secretary. Lilly DeBusher, our public relations coordinator. Haley Eschenberg, our president. Kylie Hannaford, our treasurer. And Kenzie White, our vice president. And Serenity, I'll let you introduce who you're here with.
Hi, I'm Serenity, I'm here with my mom, my stepdad, my sister, my boyfriend, and my boyfriend's friend.
And let's just give one last big round of applause for all the high school leaders in this room tonight.
Now that's what it's all about, these kids. Next, we're gonna take comments from the Board of Education members, excuse me, we're gonna start with Ms. Ayudo.
Okay, hi. Just congratulations to everyone and great job, good luck in your future endeavors if this is your senior year, and again, congratulations.
Congrats to all our amazing students and perfect parents. Congratulations to all the students, congratulations to all the parents. I know it takes a lot. And I would like to thank Mr. Benton and his team for all they do, and thank all the teachers for all they do. Thank you.
They've said pretty much everything, but it's really nice to see students take that leadership role, building that independence for the next level. They're gonna do great things and it gives us a sense of hope, that there's great kids out there that are gonna do great things. And so congratulations to all of you. And I know, parents, you had to drive them here, there, and everywhere, and support them in many different ways, so we appreciate all the support that you gave them as well.
Just a couple of things, I had the opportunity last week to attend Ms. Collins' choir group, their annual banquet, and just to say what a group that that is, and they love to dance, love to sing, and always an enjoyable event to go and attend to. So thank you again for the invitation. Thank you, parents, for everything that you do, like they said, driving back and forth, keeping them active, please keep that up. Looking forward to, after a two-year hiatus, where we're going back to our graduation ceremony back at Spethesa, so that's gonna be a nice event. And Eric, what's up with the facial brooch there? It's not winter yet?
I'm losing it here.
Oh, you're losing it there, so it's gaining in here, all right. That's all.
I just wanted to say, everything else is already stated, congratulations to all the students, and thank the parents for getting them where they need to be. And also, I wanted to say, I heard the little, it was two twins right here in the front, and they were standing tall, saying the pleasure of the league, and I just love having students here, and to hear them say that, they love all that kind of stuff. But just congratulations and thank you, parents.
I just wanted to say, the students' leadership is good job, keep it up, because it's important that we have people take these positions and, you know, furthering their goals and things like that. Thank you.
Just what everyone else has already said, congratulations to the students and thank you so much to the parents and the staff and the teachers for helping them along.
An amazing group of students.
Same thing, good job.
I just wanted to say, before you leave, congratulations to all the students, it's a great foundation for your leadership skills. Find us 10 years from now, we'll find you all still in leadership positions, I'm sure. And congratulations to you, parents, you've gotta be proud tonight, you should be proud. A great foundation given by you, too. Thank you all.
We'd just like to remind everybody that the scholarship recipients are gonna be in the Memorial Day Parade, so if you get a chance to come out and see us on Martin, on Common Road, is that where it is?
Yep, Common Road.
Please show up, thank you very much. We're gonna take a 10-minute recess, so if you folks need to leave, we'll understand before we continue our meeting. Thank you very much.